Following procedure. So as the voices said, the video, there was a video and audio recording of this meeting that will be available within 24 hours and it will be posted to the town of Waterford's planning department website. Anybody who's attending, the idea is that we'll stay on mute unless people are speaking. Generally, this is a working meeting of the commission and so, and it's also a special meeting of the commission. So only those items that are on the agenda tonight will be up for discussion. We will not be using the chat feature in tonight's meeting. And if anybody has questions about the discussions this evening or any elements of the proposed, or the draft affordable housing plan, please call our office at eight six oh four 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 five eight one three between the hours of eight AM and four PM, Monday to Friday. And commission members present this evening, we have Karen Barnett, Greg Masid, and Ken Patrini.
Okay. A quick. So we have three members, no alternates tonight. We do have two new members to point to the board. They have not been sworn in yet. Nicole G. S. I. Is going to be a regular member. And I'm not exactly sure the number's number, Ben.
Bert Schenard.
Do you know Abby?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. And he will be an alternate. So once they get sworn in, they'll probably be at the next meeting. So that'll give us a full complement of board members and two all. But it will be an alternate now, although some lists have him still online as a member, he'll be an alternate. So. So that'll be good. Five members and two alternates. Number two approval of March twenty second, twenty twenty two minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the the March twenty twenty two meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, motion made by Ken, seconded by Karen to approve the March twenty two, two thousand twenty two minutes. Ball favor. I.
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 Three, nothing in favor. Next one is item three, the draft affordable housing plan. I think Mr. Troller, I think we talked, I talked with Abby earlier and and I believe that everybody has read the the plan, hopefully. And was going to start off to see if there were any questions. So that, you know, we might be able to save the the full presentation if there is read the plan and then can address any questions to you at least to start. So does anybody have any questions on that?
I have one question, but I'm not sure that it, I'm not sure how, it's really based on something I heard last week at the five thirty presentation.
Okay.
Um, I'm gonna blank on who brought up the idea, but um, there was a mention of partnering with some either Habitat for Humanity or Veterans organizations to build houses in Waterford at the affordable level. And I was curious what the process of, if we have any information about how we might go about encouraging that or reaching out to organizations as part of that. It seemed like an interesting idea to me.
Abby, do you want to address that or do you want me to take a shot?
Or Abby, either one.
Yeah, glad if you had experience in it. I have some thoughts on how we might proceed, but but glad if you've had experience in other communities certainly would defer if you've got direct experience.
Yeah, no, I think it's it's a great opportunity to try to partner with groups like Habitat for Humanity or other groups around that have housing as one of their key issues. The area, the issue that arises is the one of funding for these types of housing units. First, we we need a land or we need a site. So if the town had a residential lot or something like that, or a parcel of land, that's sort of the first hurdle and the town can be involved because of that particular situation that they have the land. And next stop, I mean, Habitat for Humanity has tremendous experience doing these types of things. But the money also needs to be generated to create this unit. So is that going to be assisted housing created with the state or federal grant? Is it going to be through private donations, municipal participation, all these types of things? It's hard to identify the specifics, but I think that the plan could identify the the program that our goal would be to work with entities like Habitat for Humanity to create additional units and then let that conversation unfold. Abby might reach out, for example, have an introductory meeting and then go to the next step. But I don't know that we can specify the site details and the other material at this point in time, but I think certainly the plan can highlight that as a strategy to work on that.
Because I I guess as a follow up, I would say, I was driving north this weekend and I saw this billboard in Worcester for an organization, I think it's called Housing for Veterans. And they actually are funded in part by like Chase Bank. So I just wasn't sure how we decide which organizations we reach out to or if there was some kind of process. Seeing the billboard after having the meeting, it just kind of sparked a
No, good for you.
You know. But I didn't want to pick one charity over another charity if there was some kind of bidding process or whatever. How we get.
That that's really good because I think the other thing that goes on here in the background is that banks have obligations under what's called the Community Reinvestment Act. This means is you can't just be a bank and loan to sort of rich communities and rich areas for rich things. The issue is there is a reinvestment hierarchy, I guess, in terms of this particular situation. So that Chase Bank or another bank, Bank of America, anybody could choose to meet their community reinvestment act obligations through this type of thing. And so now you're you're putting a couple of different parties together. So Habitat for Humanity might be level one because you could probably cover most of that with with one group. But Community Reinvestment Act starts to get to be kind of a gradual level course in this type of stuff and involves some expertise. I'm working with somebody in another community who has been in the banking industry and is very familiar with it. And he thinks it's fertile ground for them to explore that. So I think if the commission's comfortable, I think we can add another strategy or recommendation in the plan to explore these types of partnerships, including the Community Reinvestment Act is a way to do this. Now, how much attention that will get in the near future, it's hard to say because there's enough stuff going on that may consume all of the time and oxygen. But I do think it's the type of thing that really could be productive in the future. I'll make note of that as well.
Yeah, there may be some things that we can consider relative to adding some carrots out there. So if it's not municipal property, there, you know, certain things like if there's a certain rate of a level of affordability, perhaps that corresponds to reductions in building permit plan or review costs and some of that kind of stuff, which some of our ordinances allow us to to set some of those those types of fees. So we could, we can also consider are there other incentives or you know, they may not be a make or break, but at least sets the town up to be out there as friendly to folks who want to come in with these kinds of projects.
Because the other thing too is I thought when we did the survey that one of the categories people were interested in was having veterans housing as well as senior housing. I don't know what's out there for seniors, but at any rate.
I think the key issue in all of these is the sorts of funding. So there's there's two general categories or flavors. We have assisted housing, which is state or federal grants or construction or other favorable terms for loans. And then we also start to get into the need restricted housing, which is now a private developers proposing something. And how do we manage that? So I think setting this up and identifying these as as goals we'd like to try to accomplish would be helpful and beneficial.
And I'd love to get something that the community is happy to welcome too.
I I think people have a big fear of the phrase, it's two words, right? Not that many letters. The concept affordable housing scares people. And then they start to see examples of how, what we mean by affordable housing today and how we can approach that. And they say, oh, that's what you're talking. Okay, I'm okay with that. So I agree with you, Karen. And if we can find ways to get units on the ground that people are comfortable with and are surprised that it's affordable housing, then that actually would facilitate some creative types of things in the future. So we've started a journey here. We'll see where it leads.
Great.
Karen, do you have any concerns with the plan as it is? Because we have to decide tonight whether we're going to move forward with this plan as is, or if Mr. Troller needs to make any changes for us to review or or before advertising is is done.
I think the plan in general is well put together. I just thought it was an interesting comment made last week and I thought it was mentioning tonight, worth mentioning tonight.
Okay. Ken?
I don't know. I feel like I'm a little bit. I mean, in general, the idea. I mean, I understand, I like all the statistics and all the information that's given there. And ultimately, just to, for my own clarification, this is all for the plan of conservation development for that document. And then all, no, it's going to be actually for our zoning regulations?
No, this is a statutory mandated plan that that we are obligated to write and adopt by June first of this year. And then every five years, we are obligated to update it. The P O C D effort that we are about to undertake will absolutely reference this plan, incorporate elements of it. But this plan has to be updated on a shorter time horizon than the ten year P O C D time horizon. So so we'll have to, you know, every five years be planning to review some of the implementation strategies. What have we done? Where are our numbers? And and make edits as we need to.
So I guess ultimately, what does this plan offer us as a community? Like, what's the ultimate goal of of the document? What is it? What does it help developers or other people do? I mean, what's the, I I guess, you know, part of it is just. And I was reading some of the the report from last week and it says it's like a plan to do a plan. So I'm like, you know, and I I remember the last presentation and I did miss the one, the five thirty one last week. And I understand what's being said here. I just, what is it going to be used for in in the in the long term? Like, what do we, what do we need to, I hate to be like that blunt, but what do we need to, I mean, it's statutory, but what is it going to be used for or what can we use it for? Or is it just a community outreach to how we can, is that what it's for, purpose?
Yes. So if I, if I may, can I jump in, Abby? Is that okay? Yeah. So I think it's important, I think, to go back in time. For many, many years, communities in Connecticut didn't focus quite as much on housing as parts of their plans of conservation and development. Housing was generally affordable. The private sector took care of it. There were entities which undertook the creation of affordable housing, could be local housing authorities or a HEPA or others that that did this type of thing. And so housing kind of happened. And one of the slides that we were able to show at the public meeting last week really showed how housing prices relative to incomes have started to to skyrocket such that more and more people are getting left behind. They simply lack the ability to be able to afford housing, either rental or purchase. And the state recognized this and, you know, way back in nineteen eighty nine, they adopted the Affordable Housing Appeals Procedure, but that's really sort of old history. And really, the affordability crisis has now grown to the point that they've asked communities to get more active in this. So I think as we started on this process, what we're really looking at is that how can we inform Waterford residents and decision makers and others about the new issues related to housing affordability? And set the stage for future policies and actions. And that's really, I think, the first step in this plan. I think as Abby points out, the town's about to embark on a P O C D update. At that point in time, the issue of housing affordability, I think it's touched on in the current plan, but it's going to get pushed further along in terms of that discussion and become more robust. And groups, commissions, boards, agencies in town will now start to refer to this document and and consider perhaps as as part of their overall approach and strategy, how to start to address this issue. So this plan itself doesn't dictate specific regulation changes or other types of activities, but it hints at the types of things that can be done for the commission in the future to incorporate it into the P O C D, to address it as part of approvals, to talk about it as part of the zoning regulations. Somebody's in for a special permit or a site plan. This is, it becomes an official policy document of the town and you could refer to it in terms of those types of scenarios. So I was sensitive to the comments last week about, you know, this isn't a plan, it's a plan to make a plan. And I understand that, but I also think in Waterford's history, the housing partnership became inactive. The housing authority is on, is in the ordinances, but it doesn't have any people on it. So I think we've got to kind of turn the super tanker just a little bit and start addressing and talking about these issues. And this is, I think, a step one. So yeah, eventually we'll get to step ten or step ninety nine or something else like that. But right now, I think the biggest thing for Waterford is to make this statement, embrace the direction and start to chip away at this issue in terms of how this could be addressed. And I think that would be big progress.
No, I mean, in general, I'm not. I'm not discouraging and I and I think everything is really, you know, it's it's well put together. I like, like, I like all the statistics and all the information part of it. And again, I think you you hit the nail on the head for what most people, and I guess I would probably fall into that. When you say affordable housing, that kind of triggers something. It's like, well, wait a minute. And and again, like I use this as a, as a kind of a you know, I get a little bit of absurd argument, but it's like, well, I can't afford to live in Greenwich. But what's the, what's the affordable house? You know, you know what I mean? I mean, I didn't, when I, and I can say as somebody who grew up in the area, I didn't get to have the opportunity because it obviously wasn't there, but I started in an apartment in New London, then went to Ledger, then the, you know, and I moved around till I saved up enough money to be able to afford a home in Waterford. Very, you know, modest home. And then through, you know, other, you know, career advancements and things of that, you know, I I made it better for myself. And, you know, and and not that I'm opposed, you know, I want my, I mean, my son was the same thing. He's a young man. He just bought his first house in the town and but he saved the money to be able to put a down payment on it. So it was kind of, I mean, that's kind of where I come from as a as a resident and, you know, and that's kind of where I'm, I stand, I guess. You know, and I'm just trying to be frank and real about it. But I, I mean, ultimately, it kind of Greg's initial question to 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 the members here. I don't see an issue with it, like in general, I don't think there's anything wrong. I really appreciate what Karen said. I think that was a great idea. I mean, that, you know, that's the kind of people I think, you know, we should want to be helping. Is those less fortunate in that sense, you know, who who have served our country or, you know? And again, I'm not trying to single out, but I mean, they're a community who I think are very underserved. And they gave a lot to serve our country. So just in that, in that sense alone, you know, that, you know, I would definitely agree with that. And I would love to see something like that in there. Habitat, same thing. So that's just my general, you know, feelings and thoughts about it. But ultimately, I don't see anything that bothers me with the plan, I, you know, and and I just think it's again, like what you're saying, if I'm understanding, it's just another tool in our toolbox to be able to create and and regulations and policies in the town.
I think you're right, Ken. I think the the challenge we we actually have right now in the marketplace is that housing is is increased in rent, for example, in sale price to the point that for people who are still trying to save for that first down payment, the price of housing has gotten away from them. It's jumped twenty five percent to the COVID, which means that, you know, whatever that means in terms of, you know, local housing prices, somebody needs that much more of a down payment. So it's the type of thing that it's just always beyond people's grasp. And affordable housing isn't something that you know, is this great bonus that people get a house? It comes with restrictions in terms of sale prices and rental rates and everything else. So there is some degree of protection that it's not going to cost you more than this. But when, if you buy a house and then go to sell it, the answer is you can't sell it for more than that. So the capital gains that most homeowners have come to expect and appreciate is generally not available in the affordable housing situation. People get into housing, you get the tax benefits on a purchase. But when it comes to resale, the issue is it's dictated by the formula, which is compared to income. So I think, you know, it's again, it's a, it's a helping hand to get people started into the housing market without chasing their tail on this particular situation. If developers only build at the upper end of the market, well, will never meet the need for people who may earn minimum wage, et cetera. So how can we expand our housing supply? And and I don't think the plan intends to answer that question. I happened to be in on the commissions meeting one night. Gosh, Abby was at it a couple of months ago when you approved a development affordable units near I guess it was Target, right? Same side of the, near Crystal Mall. And so the issue is that's going to address the housing needs of a lot of people. And from what I saw from the development, I thought it would be a great addition to Waterford. So could we do more things like that? I don't know. Maybe not all just like that, but could be other ways for us to to start to address those kinds of needs and maybe call it something other than affordable housing. That would be, I think, that too, that'd be a good outcome.
The the one, the thing I didn't, it just was news to me is that I didn't realize that you you were restricted. As a purchaser, you get a benefit benefit, but also you don't really, you don't reap the benefit as a I didn't know that. So that's, that's an interesting fact that I just, I learned tonight. So thank you.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Troller? So I I just have a question for Abby. You know, we have to make sure that most of the developments or any development or progress that we make conforms to the P O C D. Are we obligated for that under this plan? And I know it's planned
Greg, your audio is is really garbled.
Sorry, are we obligated or approve any housing development?
Your, it's your
things, but.
I did not catch any of that. Your audio is super garbled.
And kind of every seven minutes.
Can you hear me now?
That's a little better.
Okay, let me, I'm not very bandwidth, be very close to the to the computer now. Are we obligated to approve developments only if they're in conformance with this plan like we are under P O C D?
Not quite sure how to answer that, Greg. I think the best way to state it would be we're always going to have the Affordable Housing Appeals Procedure eight thirty G. And should an application come in that meets the requirements of that statute, the commission isn't obligated to approve it, but a denial, defending a denial or unreasonable conditions puts the commission into an hot seat. So it's something which would require the commission's full attention, working with staff to figure out how to approach that. I I think this plan identifies the need for strategies to address the affordability of housing. And you might be more inclined to look at a situation in a particular location and evaluate it for, is this a good fit in that area? Will it make Waterford a better place, a stronger community, meet housing needs? And you may be inclined to approve it. But I I don't think you would be obligated by this plan to have to approve something.
The plan sets out recommendations that the commission can consider in the future for policies to address, you know, does the commission want to undertake some kind of inclusionary housing regulation or, you know, something that requires ten percent of developments over a certain size to be eighty or sixty percent of of A M I in terms of their rental or sale prices. So there's, there are policies in here that that the commission could use this as a tool to justify the adoption of new regulation or policies, but it doesn't obligate on a case by case basis to approve or deny specific projects. This says, here's your roadmap to to set out, you know, or the things you should consider when looking at policies for how to address housing going forward. And I think we just lost Greg. So we might need to pause and see if he can can get back. I wonder, Greg, if you're on your computer now, if it makes sense to try zoom on your phone.
Oh. Thanks.
Sorry about that. I had to switch it service.
Perfect.
Okay. So can you hear me now better?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Switch to internet now and then signal. Okay. So you want us to decide that this is the appropriate plan, Abby, right? So that we can move forward with advertising?
Right. And the question tonight is that there's any content. So for example, adding a strategy relative to a recommendation that seeks out you know, nonprofit or charitable organizations like Habitat or Housing for Veterans, similar to those as as to look for opportunities and pathways to partner. So that could be another recommendation that Glenn puts in. What we're hoping for out of this is your final guidance on the changes Glenn will make in the next twenty four, forty eight hours that get posted because we've got to have this advertised by April fifth. Because we've already, we've set the the public hearing for May tenth. So we just want to make sure that there is a draft plan that that includes any of your final comments. I don't know if folks want to go through the report that Glenn put together on the community input and feedback. There were some possible responses and approaches that he put together and some recommendations and suggestions from Planted Metrics. And I'm, Glenn, do you need us to go through those or or look at them in any way to see whether or not the commission agrees with making amendments based on them?
I think that would be helpful, Abby. I mean, I think most of the there are some comments that were made that it's hard to address fully. And so I think that the commission might advise on those, no change is necessary. And there may be some other ones which the commission thinks that that's an interesting idea or concept. And yes, that change should be made. So, for example, the date of this report is September of twenty twenty one. Since that time, the state has updated the Affordable Housing Appeals List with new data for Waterford. And so we should update the report to include that information. It's entirely possible that come Friday, April first, the HUD will send out new income information. If we get it in time, we're going to update the report to include the new income information because much of, you know, quote, what's affordable drives from that. And if we don't get that data in time, then between April first and then the public hearing date, we will be updating the plan at the public hearing to put the most up to date data in. We don't expect the twenty twenty census data to be released until sometime this summer, which is so frustrating because you know, the the data is is the best we have at this time, but it's not the level of data I would prefer to have for the plan. So I I think most of these, I think, I wanted to record the comments. I organized them for the commission. And as Abby pointed out, there's some possible approaches and responses in terms of those. And I think many of those, there's no change or no response or modification of the plan that's necessary. And I think there is a couple that the plan could be improved by addressing. So if it helps the commission, we can go through them one by one and and do it that way.
Karen, Karen, I I don't I don't have any changes to to make to the plan. So I don't know if if either of you two do.
Nothing sticks out to me. I I I appreciate the clarification on on the specifics of what this plan is. But again, you know, I guess that's being new to the commission, new to this, the process, but I I don't have anything at this time.
Karen, if you want to, you know, propose that we add your idea to it, I think that's a good idea. That's impossible approaches. That would be in section where, where would that go toward the end, right?
Yeah, I'd find a place to add in the comment, I think, about veterans housing, partnering with Habitat for Humanity. And then other partners, perhaps using the Community Reinvestment Act.
Yeah, I think partnerships, partnerships in general. There there's any number. There's not just Habitat. There's not just the banks, but there are the banks, the the But there are the banks, the, the veterans agencies, there's, there's senior organizations, there's. There's all kinds of different ones, but partnerships in general, I think, public, private partnerships. Is that, is that right, Karen?
Yeah, that's, that's, uh, that would be a hope. I'd be, I'd be happy to propose adding that.
So that's in four point, is that four point seven, you think, Glenn?
Um, I haven't figured out exactly where that would go yet, but.
It seems like I did another strategies that could be.
Four, four point.
Yeah, I think Greg's right. Four point seven would be the best place, I believe, for that.
I do have another, just a quick question, I guess. And then it was more specific to the, you know, potential housing areas. I know that was one of the comments as well. Now, those are just suggested areas or potential areas or. Or is it just? I mean. Wha- what?
What page are you on, Ken?
I'm on page thirty three and thirty, thirty two and thirty three, where it shows the town of Waterford, red, green. And then it shows. It just says, consider identify potential housing opportunity site. The, the, what?
How were those areas selected? You know, when you, when you put it on that map, like specifically on page thirty three?
So on, on thirty three that we had with Abby's and Mark's assistants had prepared the maps on page thirty two. And so what we said is, okay, well, well, what factors might support or inhibit the development of affordable housing? And so public water, public sewer, or transit proximity to shopping or other business activities? Or, you know, the town center or Quaker Hill or Megal Point or other parts of town? Where we already have some concentration of population. So that's why I ended up with the green map. And then the red map was, well, you hang on a second here, we probably don't want to put higher density housing in public water supply watersheds. And wetlands or steep slopes or floodplains. So we ended up the red map. And then we came over and looked at the map of town and said, well, hang on a second here. We've got some nodes such as. Town Center, Quaker Hill, Megal Point, we've got a fair amount of activity up on Route eighty five, Route thirty two, Route one. To identify some possible areas that could be. You know, focal points or areas where the housing might fit in best with the overall. Development pattern, current, future in Waterford. So the maps were meant to help people visualize or understand that there are certain places where affordable housing is perhaps more likely to go. And other places where it's less likely to go. So I guess.
Well, okay, that, that's a good explanation. I guess. The one that, you know, maybe it's, is the one in Megal Point. I don't see. I'm not, I'm not seeing affordable housing down there or how that, I would see more business or kind of village area. But an affordable, affordable housing to me doesn't really fit in that area per se. Because it's mostly business and rest, in restaurants and then kind of like a village. You know, an existing, you know, housing development that's been there for, you know, seventy years, you know, different, you know, the avenues. I'm not really understanding. You know, why that would be, would have been picked, but the other ones kind of make more sense to me. Because of, you know, off of Route thirty two, Route one. Route eighty five in that area. And I, and I kind of, I, I kind of think those areas make sense to me. For the affordable housing area, but down the Megal Point one is just a little bit curious.
Yeah, I think we were thinking of Megal Point as being a little bit bigger area than just the commercial, you know, the area where the avenues etc are. But if it's the commission's desire to take Megal Point off that graphic, we can sort of make that happen.
I, I just don't see the opportunity down there, but that's just my. From my view.
The other point.
Ken, are you proposing that we take that off?
I mean, I, I just, I don't see, there's no real. Property, I mean, with Millstone down there and there's really no, I mean, you have Niantic and everything, but there's no, I, I don't see any. I don't see any properties in this, that area of town that would. You know, it's just.
There is that. I think it's a campground right now. That's like a seventeen acre, thirty acre property, and I think it's even for sale. So. I hate to cut that out. It's right there on the hill. You know, so if we're talking about Megal Point is more than just like where the, the boat launches. You know, and, and maybe there's opportunities too, whereas businesses expand, they put little apartments up top that, you know. If you're running a restaurant, you can have some of your staff live on, you know, up top. Because I think that's what they're doing over in Niantic right now, right? They're doing condos up top and businesses below and that where the.
I believe, I believe so. Yeah, okay. I guess I was thinking Megal Point proper, not, oh, I didn't think about that property. But I mean, that's definitely.
I mean, I hate to limit, I hate to limit things.
No, no, I, I don't want to limit things. I'm just, you know, I, I was just thinking, I was thinking. You know, below the bridge as Megal Point to me that, I mean, that doesn't. You know. But I see, I see what you're saying. I, I, that's, that would be the only property, I guess, that would have that opportunity. But the other thing is too, is that. I, I could see that as prime, you know. I would. A developer would be very, very hard pressed. To want to do that is, they would want to do this as a high end condos or something like that.
Oh, there's always like units in the back or.
Perhaps changing the terminology. So it's not just Megal Point, but Megal Point area or, you know, Southern Niantic River or something.
Megal Point and adjacent or something.
Yeah.
I don't know that, that's.
What I was going to suggest was perhaps the graphic on thirty three replicates a lot of what's on thirty two in terms of information. So I think to this graphic and the labeling in the bottom of that. It was even hard to read with the red text, the blue text and the yellow text. To just get rid of that graphic in that text and blend it into what's the mapping is on page thirty two, what we're interested in. If I was a potential applicant coming to the commission, I would want to talk about the fact that the area that I am proposing. Has many of the factors promoting affordable housing. And the commission could look at that and say, okay, yeah, yeah, you make a good point. But not necessarily rely on the specific wording or sort of anything else. So it seems to me that the functionality of this is to identify that we're really not looking in the rural hinterlands of Waterford. And public water supply watershed areas to promote this. We think that locations in, in near services is actually going to be a better place, both for the community and for the people who are going to live there. And I think that's what the maps can help us do. My sense would be to, to, if the commission's comfortable, is blend the information on thirty three. Into the, the graphics on thirty two. And then I think we get our message across.
Yeah, so we won't have the map on thirty three.
Correct. We'd take that information. I think all of the public water, public sewer, existing density, busy corridors. I, I'd take that information and move it over to the other maps. But then the listings down at the bottom, Civic Triangle, Megal Point, Route one, Route thirty two, oh, Andy School. Boom, those come off.
Go on, I, I, I would agree with that. Ken, Karen?
I mean, I like that, I guess. I mean, you know, I, I mean, I mean, part of. To be quite frank, part of my, my. My comment is because I live there. So, I mean, I live in, in the area. So I mean, again. Again, the, the principle I don't have a problem with. I mean, I just, I would find it very, very. Any developer developing that property or looking to, is not going to be looking to develop it from an affordable, because it's going to have views of. Niantic Bay. It's definitely going to be more of a high end. And I know just in Niantic, they have the same, similar, I mean. Again, do I want the Morton House in my backyard? I, I don't know. I mean, I'm just, I'm being honest, you know, from, from how I, you know, from where I'm sitting, you know. But. I mean, I don't know. Being honest.
I'm fine with blending the maps.
If I may too, I think for the commission, on the second page of the handout, comments nine through sixteen. Were some suggestions by Planta Metrics that I thought could improve the report. So if I could just summarize those with you quickly. Number nine is to update for the two thousand and twenty two Affordable Housing Appeals List data, that's factual information. I just think having new information is better. I think number ten is to update for the HUD income limits when they become available. And it could be this week, but I kind of sense that this is going to happen between now or, and the public hearing date. So we would suggest, I think, to the commission at the public hearing that those numbers be updated. The charts on page seventeen and eighteen show over time, the production of different types of affordable units. I just don't think they're that well explained. And I think they're kind of esoteric in the report. So my suggestion after talking with Abby is that those two charts, I, I don't think they're helping our conversation. We could eliminate those. We took eight pages to report the survey results. And some of the information is about the, you know, age composition of respondents and other things. And I think we could cut the eight pages down to six or four. We already have a report which summarizes all of the survey results. So I don't, I don't think that we need eight pages. And if the commission was comfortable, we could, we could shorten that up. One of the things that did come up was the issue about importance of design. And since this report was done back in September of last year. I've prepared some information that sort of summarizes the concept of design that could help move us forward. So rather than just simply say it in words, have some pictures to talk about design and design parameters. I think Abby, Mark and I were, have been working on the issue about moratorium eligibility and how many housing equivalent points we've gotten. It's possible, depending on the C O dates and exactly when those fall. Given the state guidelines that we could be close to a moratorium. And so if we have the data, we'll go ahead and include it. And if not, we're just going to recommend that the moratorium date. Be figured out at the first available opportunity. I think there was a section five of the report or there is about implementation. It's not particularly well fleshed out, but I think at this point in time, that information can be. Eliminated in terms of specific implementation steps at this point. Don't have to prioritize things or put timeframes on them specifically. It'll give the commission more flexibility on those. And then lastly, add an acknowledgements page, which reflects the members of the commission who participated. So I think those, I think would enhance the report. And if you're comfortable with those, I would make changes nine through sixteen. The map on page thirty three, I think that was. And then the comments about that Abby made about. Permit, reduction of permit fees. And then the comment that Karen made about partnerships and Community Reinvestment Act.
Well, I always tell people, don't sign a blank sheet of paper. And so I don't think that I could approve tonight. You making the changes later. You know, so we approve it subject to your changes without seeing them. I, I couldn't do that. I'd have to, I'd have to see the changes that you made nine through sixteen before I could. Say that I'm okay with it. And I, I thought we needed it tonight. If we don't need it tonight. Then I'm, I'm okay with looking at some of these changes. I just can't approve it now, subject to those, you know.
Understood. With those. My suggestion would be, I think, as Abby pointed out earlier. Unfortunately, because of the state June one deadline, we are headed on this timeframe. As Abby pointed out, the plan needs to be posted on the town's website by Tuesday. So based on your comment, Greg, what I would suggest, if the commission's comfortable, is that I will update this plan to make it. The March draft of the plan, not make any changes. Except the ones perhaps. The one that Karen suggested. But I can also then prepare an updated draft for the commission. And we can keep that on a parallel pathway. And at the public hearing, we can, if the commission has now seen the changes and it's comfortable with those. You could then say, okay, make these changes in the final plan when it comes to adoption.
Okay. I mean, I'm not the final say, Karen, connect and can, can chime in too. But also you said make Karen's changes, but also the changes on thirty two and thirty three.
I think we. Yeah, I, I think, yeah, if, if the commission is, I think it's much easier for us to envision the reduction or elimination of a map on a page. And if the commission authorizes me to do that, I'm very happy to make that happen. With regard to these other changes which are redoing the math and the other stuff, it is factual information, but I would want you to see it. So I would say, if the commission is comfortable, authorize Abby and I to move ahead for a public hearing on May tenth. And make the modifications on page thirty three.
Is there any, is there any interest at this time in removing the two charts on seventeen and eighteen, since we thought there was a purpose? Do folks feel like those need to stay in this draft, since we would be adding anything, we'd be taking it out?
I'm okay with taking them out.
Thank you, Abby. Thank you.
They kind of just point out the fact that we don't meet. To meet the requirements. It really like, there is not much information, I don't think, on there.
That was our feeling. At, at one point in time, I was preparing these charts because they helped illustrate the point that if the town doesn't do anything in terms of affordable housing. Our actual percentage starts to decrease over time. And so we're falling further behind. But I think. Two pages for that little observation is, isn't helpful as, as helpful it could be.
But to answer your question, Greg, I, I, I agree with you, but I would say that the three points that those two pages, the. The maps combined and then Karen's suggestion, I think. I, I'm okay with those, those three. The rest, I would agree. I think I want to see, like you said. You know, and do it that way. That makes a lot of sense.
Karen, you okay with removing those charts?
Yeah, that's fine. I was just about to say, I think you make a good point. And I'm fine with what's been posted.
Okay, so someone wants to make a motion, basically it's incorporating partnerships or public, private partnerships. In section, what, four point seven, I think. Eliminating the charts on page seventeen and eighteen and combining. Page thirty two and thirty three by eliminating. Page thirty three. And moving the criteria on page thirty three, possible criteria onto the map on page thirty two. Does that sum it all up?
Makes sense.
A second.
I, did I, did I just make the motion? Okay, I just made the motion in seconds if I can. To, to advertise the housing plan as amended by those three issues. And advertise it for a May tenth public hearing, correct? Okay. Any discussion on that or? We're good?
I guess the only thing, I guess the only thing I would just, the discussion on the, on the possible criteria, are you going to get rid of the, the naming on there? And just put the actual squares and boxes?
Well, I thought it was getting rid of that map completely. Just what, what, page thirty three, basically just the words possible criteria and then everything else in white, right? Keeping.
Oh, I thought that was going away.
I think, I think that that honors what the commission decided in terms of elimination here. So we will eliminate that. And then as the alternate draft for the public hearing. I'll work with Abby and Mark on this one. We may bring some of that wording back onto page thirty two for the commission to see. But we're not going to have the specificity. So. I, I think that works really well, Greg. I think the idea is, is that the only changes to the plan were reducing or eliminating. Seventeen, eighteen, and then thirty two, thirty three. And then we're going to add the statement on the section four point seven about partnerships. That makes it very clean. And then I'll work with Abby on the possibility of some updated data and other stuff for May tenth. Works well.
What we'll do is put together a staff report well in advance of that public hearing. So that folks in, in the general public can see it. So that folks in in the general public can see it. And then we'll also have the presentation that night that folks will have the chance to comment on those things as well.
And and we can add or delete at that point.
Correct, yeah. And then you can basically make findings and kind of like we do a staff reports. Conditions of approval of the final plan and then those conditions become the final document.
Hey, the one, one other thing I would just suggest too, if we could. Get some social media on all this so people can actually participate in the public. I guess that's my biggest concern because I mean, public hearings, it seems like we've been doing them and. Nobody should, I mean, last couple more people, but I'd like to see more participation if it's possible.
Yeah, and Greg, you and I discussed having that meeting in person. Regardless of what happens with any enabling for for virtual meetings or hybrid meetings, that this should really be an in person meeting. So we'll work on the advertising for it being broad, but also, you know, making sure that we're welcoming folks into town hall to have that discussion.
Okay, all in favor of the motion?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi, hi, all in favor, so three to nothing in favor of moving this plan forward with those three amendments. That is it. I propose an adjournment.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Second if I can, motion made by Karen to adjourn. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you, Glenn. See you, see you in there.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you.
Bye, guys.